Okay, welcome to Monday. Go straight into budget review. Kathy, go ahead.
Okay, Kathy Funkmexter, Finance Director. Our first financial that we're going to go over is the Coroner's Office. And so I'll let Kelly pull that up online. Okay, so intergovernmental, we have budgeted one hundred and forty one thousand five ninety. We, we actually are showing like a negative three hundred and sixteen thousand. But this is a line where the autopsy reimbursements happen. They happen twice a year. And so the first reimbursement of the year is the first half of the year will happen. This is through August twenty seventh, so those will happen for January through June expenses. It, it's not showing up here yet. And then the second half of the year will be submitted in two thousand and twenty six. And will be accrued, will be a financial accrual. So on this, the budget also included a grant revenue for the gurney, which was received earlier this year. But it was accrued back to two thousand and twenty four. So because of that, we'll, we'll make a budget amendment to reduce the revenue to actually eighty thousand, which is approximately what we've been receiving for the last several years. Goods and services, we have a budget of twenty thousand. We've received in ten thousand five hundred and twelve dollars. These are corner fees that are charged to other counties. And then miscellaneous, we have budget of thirteen thousand. We've received two thousand five hundred and forty dollars. These are for, for example, we've got, gotten in two thousand three hundred dollars in rental income for the use of the autopsy suites. And this is a fund that's supported by the general fund, and so our revenues will not equal expenses on this budget.
Kathy, did you say that the, the grant for the gurney is ongoing and we continue to receive?
No, it was a one-time grant, and it was a grant to reimburse us for the cost, part of the cost of that. And we actually received it late in two thousand and twenty four. And we, we didn't know if we were going to receive it in twenty four or twenty five, so we had budgeted it in twenty five. So we're going to need to amend that to remove it from the budget. It was about sixty, I think sixty-five thousand, some sixty-three, something like that. Okay, we'll go to expenses. On the expense side, we have personnel, which is our largest expense. It's eight, budgeted at eight hundred and sixty-two thousand six twenty, six thirty-five. Our actuals so far through August are four hundred and seventy-three thousand six thirty-three. Personnel includes payroll through the first half of August. Second half is estimated to be approximately twenty-three thousand dollars. So that will put us in align with our, our actual personnel target for the budget. On supplies, it's, we budget ninety-five thousand dollars. We've only spent sixteen three hundred and thirty dollars. But we typically about halfway through the year make a large supply of purchase to stock up, to have stock for the next twelve months. So the department hasn't made that purchase yet, and they do anticipate, they do not anticipate going over budget on this line item. For services, we have four hundred thousand eight forty-seven budgeted. We've expended two hundred and thirty-three thousand seven seventy. The department is not expecting to see a large increase in the activity on this line. A hundred and forty-five thousand of that expenditure is actually related to autopsy cost. The rest is primarily internal services type expenses. So we're slightly, slightly below on that services line for our target. But we don't anticipate going over our budget. And this department has seven budgeted positions and, and all are filled right now.
Dana, was there? With regard to your autopsy costs, did you, did I remember, did we get a new doctor? Or did we retain an old one for a cheaper price? Or what, what was going on with that?
Morning Commissioners, Dana Tucker, Kels County Coroner. So Dr. Nelson died last month. So we don't have that ongoing monthly fee. Dr. Luxina is our backup pathologist, and he will continue to serve us in Kels County. I don't anticipate it going over what we've, what we've had before. Granted, any, any of the pathologists that are on their own, excuse me, they, they go off of per autopsy. And then, sorry. So they go off of per autopsy, and then their, their rates are different as to Dr. Nelson's was a, was a flat fee for anyone. Each of the other pathologists has a different fee depending on what it is. For instance, homicides are more, infants are more, and Dr. Nelson's was just a flat fee. But I, I talked to Commissioner Rader, or sorry, Farrell, and kind of went over this with him that we have the Randolph machine, and we're planning on utilizing that now because it's, it's in the best interest for the county. As to before, it wasn't, it would, it would cost us more to use that and still have to send it off to toxicology. With that, the Randolph machine is a blood test. So we can, we can draw fluids there. We can put it in the machine, and it will actually give us a quantitative amount of drugs and such in their system. As before, the reason I haven't used it before is they didn't have that. They only had a qualitative. So it would show us what was in their system, but it wouldn't give us the amounts. So I didn't think that that was feasible for us financially to be able to do that when I just had urine kits, a multi-drug urine kit that I could, I could see what was in their system. And then we would send that, if it was pending, we would send it to NMS, which is another toxicology lab that doesn't take months to get back. It only takes maybe a week or two. That is an extra expense. So with the Randolph machine, we're figuring that utilizing that, we won't have to pin them. We'll be able to see what, what is in their system and then also determine whether or not we need to do an autopsy. I think we presented a while back, Kristy did a, pulled budget, or not budget, sorry, had pulled some stats. And we had like thirty-four autopsies last year that we had to do because we have to pin them. And we'd, most likely, we're going to be overdoses, but they don't have any medical history to back it up. So that's why we would have to do that. The Randolph machine will cut down on that and then also show us whether or not we do need to do an autopsy. If they don't have any medical history, then we can look at that and say, oh, okay, yep, we've got the numbers right here. And then we can send the tox to WSP to still get that completed, but we can sign the death certificates off. We can figure out right away if we, you know, if we can not do an autopsy because the, the drugs are too high or, or whatever. So that's, that's a way that we're going to be able to cut back on that, too. So back to the pathologists, I don't, I don't anticipate it being more than.
So you, it was that you were able to secure the same flat rate with the old pathologist with the new one?
No.
No, no, because Dr. Nelson was on, was on a salary for the whole entire year. And then he was not per, per autopsy. We had up to sixty-five autopsies that he would do at this lump sum. And then after that, it would be an additional twenty-one hundred or something per autopsy. For the other pathologists, they don't, they don't do that. So they go per autopsy. But I don't anticipate us going above. I actually anticipate us being, being below. Yeah, with, with the Randolph machine, so.
What kind of maintenance costs or have to be done with that machine?
So we're, from what I, from what I've heard, the, the Randolph machine is about eight thousand a year for maintenance and, and all of that. Which is still nothing compared to what we pay for toxicology sending it off for pending death certificates. And then each, each one, depending on if it's a standard test or an expanded test, we're, we're only looking at about fifty, fifty, a little bit more than that per test. As to when we send, when we send it off to NMS, a standard is about one hundred and fifty-four. And then an expanded one is about two forty-eight or something like that. So we're, we're cutting that way down for, and then you're talking an autopsy. Of course, we're not going to bypass babies. We're not bypassing homicides or anything like that with this. We're just basically looking at drug-related ones to whether or not we're going to have to do that. I think Kristy, when she pulled the numbers, it was about seventy-four thousand last year in just those one autopsies that we had to do because we don't have anything to back it up if the toxicology came back and wasn't high enough. So we should be able to cut that down drastically, so.
I also saw that you guys identified one of your John Does.
Yeah.
That's pretty cool.
Yeah, he went missing in ninety-seven.
Wow.
Yep.
Results from that machine, are they recognized and I, I'm just, I mean, you could, you could use them in a court type thing?
No, that's, that, so that's why we still send off.
Still send them off when you're.
But I won't, yeah, I won't have to pin it. I won't have to send to NMS to get the results back sooner. What they've been seeing is they're very accurate. That was another reason I didn't go for this when it first came out is because, you know, they still have hiccups and stuff. So I was kind of waiting, and now from the, from some of the other counties that, that have them and have been using them, they're like, I see, they're very accurate. They're, they're not coming back like, oh my goodness, you know, this came back high, and really it wasn't. So, no, we still have to send off to a board-certified lab, which will send off to WSP, which doesn't cost us anything. But I can still take care of the decedent, their families, get them signed off. And for some reason, if it came back different, then we can, we can look at that. But they haven't been coming back to where, you know, it's not showing an accurate amount, so, yeah.
Autopsies over the last couple of years have been growing a little bit, if I recall, Ryan, are we seeing the same thing or?
They, they've gone up, and a lot of it is, is the drug-related deaths because they're younger or, well, they're, they're across the board for age. But a lot of them don't have medical history to, to go off of if their tox comes back and isn't high enough. So that's when we do an autopsy. And here, we'll be able to cut down on that, you know, twenty-one, twenty-five, hundred-dollar autopsy, depending on what it is for drug-related ones.
Yeah. Are you seeing any new stuff coming out? Last time you were in, you were talking about, I recall, I remember a version of fentanyl that's, and you're showing me, it's almost like a grain, a grain of salt type thing.
Carfentanil. Our tests will show, like the, the multi-drug urine test that we have, it will show carfentanil. The majority of the time that it comes back from, from the lab, it's, it's not showing that. So I, I don't know, I don't know why. I don't know if it's just more sensitive or something. Fentanyl is mainly the one that we see here. Yeah, and still methamphetamines, methadone is, is the other one that I talked about last time, and, and we do have quite a few of those. And then cocaine again, and it's typically a mixture.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
But did you say that you, you guys ran the numbers in last, based on last year, that machine would have saved you seventy-five thousand dollars?
On, for just the, the drug-related ones, it, it should. And then you bump up the fifty dollars per one instead of the hundred and to two hundred and forty dollars. And then the cost of the Randolph machine, but, but it should be saving us quite a bit of money.
That's pretty significant with your budget.
Yeah.
That's good.
Sorry, I just find it always sad, but interesting to listen to what's going on out there.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Facilities.
Okay, we're going to do facilities financials, and Sean Rowey is here to also give some operational updates if you need those. On facilities, on the revenue side, this is a general fund, so of course it's supported by the general fund. The revenues that they have budgeted is one hundred and eighty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars. And that is in our miscellaneous category, and it's primarily facility bills that are dispersed to the various departments as well as cities. And so the department's still waiting on payments to be made. We've received in one hundred and ten thousand three ninety-two. And we do anticipate that we will be above target once those payments are made over the next month. Good news is that Sean and I worked on the methodology for doing this for next year, for two thousand and twenty-six, and updated things, and we anticipate in total, the budget for next year, I was just looking at it, so that's why I'm bringing it up, is going to be a, a budget of about four hundred and eleven thousand dollars that we'll be bringing in for facility bills next year. Expenses. So on the expense side, we have nine hundred and ninety-four thousand three seventy-eight budgeted for personnel. Personnel experience some vacancies during the year, and that's why they're tracking a little bit below target for their personnel expenses. But I believe we're fully staffed right now, which is great. They have a total of ten budgeted positions, and those are filled. Part of these positions get allocated to capital improvement projects. But the department that owns the positions is facilities. And so actuals are five hundred and forty-one thousand two seventy-nine. On the supply side, we have budgeted one thirty-seven five hundred. We've expended a little more than half. And we've expended eighty-three thousand five hundred and eighty dollars. On services, this is by far their largest expenditure line item. It's two million and two thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars. We've expended one million four hundred and sixty-five dollars and one million four hundred and sixty-five thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars. On services, we're exceeding targets slightly here. But that's primarily because at the beginning of the year, we have our internal services departments that build, and that makes up about almost half of that million four, seven hundred and nineteen thousand was paid back in January. And then capital, this is budgeted at nine oh five, nine hundred and five thousand. We've expended eight hundred and seventy-nine, eight ninety-six. And this was almost entirely our purchase of our Riverside Suites that settled like last part of August, last part of August. The closing on that, so that includes Riverside Suites.
I have a question on the previous page that I was mulling over my mind. Did I hear you correctly in saying that you went over methodology and increased the budget four hundred thousand?
Yeah, we went over all of the cost, the cost allocations for doing the billings for facilities, Sean and I. And we were able to improve those, the methods that we're using, making sure that we have all the square footages and all the departments and everything, so.
So looking at the rates and the things that we were charging.
Right, we're looking at the rates and we updated all of them. They hadn't been updated, what, Sean, since like two thousand and nineteen, I think.
Some of the space allocations hadn't been updated since two thousand and eleven.
Yep.
Wow. So you changed the methodology or you just updated it?
We, we updated it, and we updated the square footage, like Sean was saying, that departments were occupying. And we also completely looked at the entire allocation method.
Good. Because I know that, for example, Noxious Weeds, they were being billed from when they were in the WSU building, correct? As far as square footage and rate goes.
The building that no longer exists, that was where the morgue used to be, yeah.
Okay, so that's, we went back and evaluated those and, okay.
That's one small example.
Also on, just one item to bring up, just so you're aware, utilities at the Hall of Justice also come out of this fund. We did recognize a water meter that may not have been working correctly over there. So we've contacted the City of Kelso on that. They're investigating it, so we may see actual usage of that utility increase with the water meter is corrected. It's been reading a few hundred units of usage. We usually expect a few thousand meters of usage, so we'll see if they can get that corrected.
City of Kelso, we owe them money.
We might. We'll see what they come back with.
How do you, as our facilities and stuff move around, you know, you were talking about some of these footages or footprints that they use. We haven't updated since, some of them, two thousand and eleven, it sounds like. When they move around, how do we, what's in place to kind of correct that?
Yeah, so we have a policy for that, actually. They're supposed to come before the board and ask for any space changes. In the past, that may not have been held to. And so when a department requests new space or a change of space, they're supposed to come to the board and through the facilities department will present that to you and get the AOK at that point.
And we haven't done some of that?
In the past, it hasn't been held to, that's correct, yeah. No.
I guess, here, I see, I'm hearing Savannah has her hand up, so go ahead, Savannah.
I think Sean went ahead and addressed exactly what I was going to say, so I'm, I'm good.
All right.
Well, I appreciate you guys doing that because in a lot of cases, if it's been since two thousand and eleven, and we take somebody's rent from whatever it was, and all of a sudden to their current one, it's pretty fiscally irresponsible on our part to take them from fourteen hundred to four thousand, you know, a month or whatever it is. So I'm glad you're doing that.
Yeah, we took a close look at the cost per square foot as well to make sure it's reasonable. We know that there's an option for some of these people to rent a third-party building if we're too expensive. But looking at the all-in costs, I think we're very reasonable. Even if it's a triple net lease, I don't think they're going to be able to do anything outside of where we're at. I think we're.
And all of our leases are triple net for the price per square foot?
It's, it's all-inclusive on our billings.
Yep.
But a lot of people want to compare, well, compare it to a triple net lease, and so they're not thinking about all the exterior costs associated with that.
Good.
So is the cost per square foot uniform across the county for each department, or is it dependent on the site?
No, it's, it's dependent upon the site. So for example, the admin building, we determine that the cost per square foot is like twelve dollars and ninety-one cents. Whereas the Hall of Justice is a little bit, what we're budgeting for next year is like seventeen dollars per square foot. It's a much more costly building to operate or has been. Let's hope that all of the corrections and things, improvements are being done in that building will help with the, some of the utility costs, for example. So, yeah, so each building has its own per square footage cost based upon that, that actual building's direct expenses and an allocation of facility labor as well.
Good.
And I think it's important to note that those billings do not include any depreciation or replacement costs included in those.
Yeah, and we don't charge for any capital expenditures on the cost allocation.
Sounds like you're just, you're basically heavily weighted on what it costs to run that place, yeah. I, I gotta go back a minute, cause we have a policy that says we're supposed to do this and, and come to us, how did we, and, and I get it that some of the commissioners may just say, oh, we don't want to worry about that, just said, you guys take care of it, they just, I, I, I don't know why it would have stopped coming.
Yeah, I, I can't speak to what happened in the past. I think moving forward though, we're trying to follow the policy and encourage you guys to be involved in those decisions.
Sounds like there's been a lot of habit about status quo, we just let it go.
But the only reason I kind of harp on it a little bit is when you do that long enough, then the adjustment is so huge. It, it, it's like these district court fees, they, they just put them off, put them off for years and years, and then when we finally make a change, it's so huge and it shocks everybody and, and I get the shock, but if you're, if you're just being diligent and doing what you're supposed to do, you don't, you don't have that.
Exactly.
Yeah. So I don't mean to harp on it, but.
It does help reduce the sticker shock.
Yeah.
Well, you end up with the wrong funds supporting everything else.
Yeah. And this isn't a big deal, it's more just curiosity out of my part. I know we've had a couple of people look at and admit the annex over here. We have anything going with that or any idea of maybe departments that want to move in there or, or anything else, I know.
You know, with the Millic project ongoing.
Yeah, probably a little bit on hold.
We reserve that for some other hoteling space if our plans don't work out, really having that plan B or fallback plan there.
Yeah.
I think PA may be looking at part of that spot as well for some desk usage.
Yeah.
If, this is a question for you, Rick. If I have an idea on the selling of county property and moving departments, is that to be done in executive session or do we talk about that here? Cause I don't wanna, I don't wanna let a cat out of a bag, you know, on selling a property, but.
I, I don't know, I'd probably have to ask Doug on that, what he prefers.
Yeah.
Run it by the attorney.
Okay, we ready to go to capital improvements? They have one, another department financial to present. Okay, this is, this is the fund where the capital improvements run through. And this is its own fund with the fund balance and revenue generation, so we have taxes budgeted at one million twenty-five thousand. This is our REIT one revenue, I actually said it right for once. And so we brought in eight hundred and ninety-four thousand nine hundred and forty dollars so far this year. And these come in, I believe, monthly. So, so we expect to receive some additional through the end of the year.
Yeah, on, on the taxes, we did, I think last meeting talked about it, we had a transfer of ownership on one of the larger companies, so we did have a pretty good windfall on the REIT. The rest of it has been pretty steady with, inconsistent with prior years.
And miscellaneous, we budgeted two hundred and ninety-eight thousand, we brought in two hundred and thirty, three hundred and thirty-seven dollars. This is primarily investment income. So, and we also have some, some cellular tower lease payments that are coming in that are actually located on the Hall of Justice roof that come into this line as well. And on other financing sources, we have budgeted four million dollars. This is, this is where we have, on a normal basis, we had one million dollars from our general fund come in, which helps cover some construction as well as debt payments on the morgue. And then we have two million that came in, I believe, last month from the Law and Justice Fund, which is earmarked specifically for the Hall of Justice HVAC project. And so you'll see, we've had expenditures of three million in the actials come through on that.
And then the last million that's not there yet.
It was ARPA.
Yeah, and with the billings for the HOJ project coming in, we should see that reimbursed here in the next month or two.
Yeah. On the Coroner's Facility, how, how long is that, do you know?
Um, the financing?
Yeah.
I believe it was a I can't remember if it was ten or twenty.
I believe the building was twenty years and then the equipment was a separate, was first.
Was a separate thing?
Seven.
Seven, somewhere there.
Yeah.
It's, the total debt payments on that is about three hundred thousand annually.
Annually.
Yep, for both equipment and building. On the expenditure side, we have personnel. As I said, we've got two people that are split fifty, fifty, fifty between facilities and capital improvements who are doing project management. And so we have one oh nine, three oh seven budgeted, we've expended sixty-two thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars. So we're just a little bit below target there. On our services, we have nine hundred and ten thousand nine hundred and seventy-four dollars budgeted. We've expended one hundred and ninety-one thousand two forty-three. Our services are tied basically to a five-year plan. Projects are in progress, like door lock replacement, parking lock upgrades, which we see here today. We came into a beautiful, brand-new parking lot right behind the admin building here. We have capital expenses of nine million four hundred and forty thousand. That, as we spoke earlier, that's primarily for six point five of that is tied to our Hall of Justice HVAC and electrical project. And the department anticipates that we will utilize all of this budget in this year, cause they've gotten going and installed some major pieces of equipment already. So we've expended on capital one million four hundred and sixty-four thousand sixty-eight dollars. And on transfers, we have a three hundred thousand dollar budget, we've transferred out two hundred and twenty-one thousand five twenty-nine and that's transfers to the general fund for payment on the morgue for the debt. And that's it for their financials.
And, uh, we, you, you know how we, we talked about, we have a water system, I think it's in, right or whatever, we're setting aside so much for future stuff. Do we do it with our buildings? You've probably answered this for me before. And if we do, how do we, like, how do you, what, what do you factor in for like this, our new coroner's office? Obviously, you want to start setting something aside, but how do you factor in as to what you're gonna charge each building?
That's, that's a great question, ongoing discussion we've had. Once we get through all of our deferred maintenance, then we can stop spending and start saving and planning for those futures, you know, because we did everything so fast and so quick. You know, we're gonna have all these roofs lining up, all these HVACs lining up, so we do need prepared in the twenty years or fifteen years as these items start to need the replacement again to have those funds available. And so this fund will kind of shift from doing all this work to reserving for that work in the future.
Okay, so just the focus of the, the fund right now, the focus of the fund is bringing up the deferred maintenance, and then when that's complete, what I'm hearing is we don't really stop that, it, it, we keep setting aside for future, so we don't have these big, big items until a group of three sits up here and steals it.
You know, uses it for a cause, that's why, like, it's not stealing.
Okay.
Like for the coroner's office, when, when the building was built, do we have a life expectancy of the roof when we expect to replace that?
Yeah, so the TPO roofs we use are usually between twenty and twenty-five years. But that can, something can go wrong with them, maybe out of warranty, and it could be sooner.
Is that just a general number for every roof in the county, or is that?
For that type of roof, so all of our roofs now are that system, is that TPO, flat roofs. You know, we have a few that are not, such as like the Cougar Cottage down there on the expo grounds, that's an actual asphalt shingle roof. And then some other buildings that are a little bit different, but as those are upgraded, that's usually the standard that these buildings are done to now.
Good. Okay, thanks Sean.
Thank you.
Any miscellaneous, I see under agenda review, I've got everybody here, if you want to move right into that, are you good with that? Okay. You're first. Yeah.
Okay. I actually have three items for tomorrow's meeting. And so I'll do the first one that I have in my hand. The first item that I'll have is requesting a public hearing to be held November twenty-fifth for purposes of setting the twenty-twenty-six levy for the general fund and for the road fund. We will have a workshop with you in October, last part of October, to actually, to actually workshop, you know, setting up and looking at the levy information as far as amounts and, and what what a one percent would bring and, and stuff like that, so we will, we will have that available on October twenty-eighth, but the actual hearing to set the county's levies for twenty-twenty-six will occur November twenty-fifth. So that's one of the agenda items.
Is that hearing, are we under timelines on that to, so that departments Deborah has a chance to put that into, or Emily or whoever does that, does the assessments, that gives them the time?
Yes, cause, cause by RCW, we have to have our levies set and into the assessor's office by the first week of December.
Okay.
And Kathy, is, is this, uh, you know, it's got general fund, mental health services, veterans relief, are those all different levies or are they one that support all those?
No, there's, there's only two levies. The general fund is one levy, but then you're required by RCW to allocate part of that levy to general fund, to veterans relief and to the mental health portion. So it's one levy, but then there's, and it's broken up into three pieces for the general fund.
Yeah. So basically, I think what you're looking for is in October twenty-eighth, we need to get, come up with what we feel are pretty hard numbers. And then the public gets a chance to review it on the twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth, right.
Deal in it, and then first part of December, it has to be to our people to get it, yeah.
Right, to get it into the system.
Okay.
Okay, then the second agenda item that I have is is for the setting of our actual budget and to have hearings, and so there's like several pieces to it. We, we make sure that we've have a public hearing to set any fees that will go into effect for twenty-twenty-six or any changes in any fees as well. We have the five-year county capital program, which is, which is the capital improvements account fund. And then we have a six-year road program. And we also know that we're gonna dissolve some funds, so we'll be discussing that at the public hearing. And then finally, we will have our twenty-twenty-six and twenty-twenty-seven biannual budgets scheduled. And that will be December the second at nine forty-five AM. And, and continued if necessary, if at that meeting the budgets are not approved, we can continue if necessary for other dates in December. But I'm hoping it will be not continued, but complete by December the second.
So end of this fiscal year, end of December is the drop dead?
Yep, you have to, according to RCW, you have to have an approved budget by the end of December. So it goes into place January one
Okay.
for twenty-twenty-six. And then my third item is for the agenda for tomorrow is we will be filing our expenditures and revenue estimates. These are the preliminary budgets, these are the budgets that all the departments have been working on. And we'll be filing those preliminary estimates with the commissioners and also making those available in the clerk's office for public. And as well as notice of all the hearings that will be going on and the budget workshops beginning September sixteenth will be the first budget workshop that will start, and we'll have budget workshops in September as well as October. And you'll have a chance to, various departments have signed up for sessions to come before the board to discuss their budget request and budget laid out for twenty-six, twenty-seven.
So after tomorrow, assuming approval of, of all this, then this, these numbers, I know you have a preliminary and all that, those numbers and dates will be posted in our office, on our website, different places.
Mm-hmm, yeah, and we've already, I think we've already started posting the dates for the workshops out there. Cause there's a lot of them, and so we've already started working on that. I have, I'll be giving you, I have a, this is the first year I'll do a summary of the expenditures and revenues so that you'll, we have to file, we have to file all the expenses by line item, which is pages and pages and pages of that. But I'll also provide you a summary of the revenues and expenses, so you can see, see those. I thought, I thought I have it by now. But Suzie's been working on them, we were trying to balance everything, so. And we'll discuss that based upon the preliminary right now. The ending fund balance that I'm projecting for twenty-twenty-six is below the amount that we would, that we as a policy have for a reserve. We have a policy that says we will have at least one month of reserve set aside, which is about eight percent of your total revenue. And so we'll, what I'm projecting as of right now is about close to five million dollars. And in, in reserve, and we probably need to be closer to about six million dollars. And in in reserve, and we probably need to be closer to about six million dollars.
That's just to meet what we have written policy, you know?
Right.
The state auditors will come in and say they'd rather see you at two months.
Yes, the recommended um that from the state auditors is two months of reserve. Which is about sixteen percent of our revenue. And so um those are the, the things we'll be looking at and working on.
Kathy, on the sixteenth, you have behavioral health tax. Is that just to discuss the allocation of the funding that is left from that tax?
Yes, that's to, that's to discuss the remaining residual um that's left. It's a little over, we anticipate it's gonna be a little over two million dollars. Um, about two point six million dollars. And previous discussions that we've had is that. Um, and this is just to make it, put it on record exactly where you want that to be allocated in twenty-six. And possibly in twenty-seven, so. Um, this preliminary budget um does not have any positions. Paid off of the residual of the behavioral um health tax. Other than two positions in the sure, I mean, in the jail, the corrections department right now. All other positions have been removed from the budget. And also on the sixteenth, we'll, we'll also go over cost allocations, just to make sure you have a good understanding of. All of our different cost allocations.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks Kathy.
Public Works.
Good mornings, Susan Eugenius, county engineer. Uh, we have multiple items. I'll go over the first and then Sean will finish with the rest. So um we have a call for bid, which is item number three on the agenda. Which is a request for qualifications for MPDES stormwater program assistance. To be submitted to Public Works by October eighth. We have an existing contract that we have been, had on uh successfully been running. For our maximum number of years, so it's just time to go out and re-advertise and test the waters of the market. Uh, this uh consultant helps make sure that uh we stay on track to meet all of the requirements of the MPDES. And they do small projects for us. They make recommendations on code changes that we need and policies to meet the MPDES. So we've been very happy with who we have, but it is time to go out for a new one. So far on the existing contract, we have spent about a quarter of the money that we had set aside for two years. So it has been well worth the money um with an expert that works with other counties and cities.
All right, um, item number four is a lease with Janus House or Janus Youth Programs, Inc. For the houses on Washington Street and the parking area. It's for a five-year period with a five-year renewal if chosen. Um, it is a one-dollar lease with compensation also on maintenance and improvement to those buildings. Uh, I think they were in here a couple of weeks ago to talk to you on their programs. And then item number five.
So it it's really just a renewal, what we we have been doing?
So it's a, it's a new, new lease altogether?
Yeah, but it, the terms are pretty much like their initial terms, okay?
Pretty similar in nature, yeah.
Okay.
We did add um a little bit of the field between the Hall of Justice and the Washington Street Houses, so they can do a parking area. So um, street parking is very limited there and they only have a driveway.
If I say the terms are consistent with what we've done in the past, I'd be accurate.
Yes, sir. Uh, number five is the first amendment to the, um, I'm gonna say the warehouse or tower lease at the landfill. This is how we get internet to the, the landfill. It's a point-to-point system. Additionally, this tower is the tower we'd like to put the Pano uh early um fire warning system on. And so this is good for another few years. There is a small fee associated with it annually. I believe it's five hundred dollars per year for the first five years. And then after that, it may, as to be determined, but that covers our lease period for the Pano system. We're currently on that tower and it's been working really good to keep consistent internet access, emails, phones and such things at the landfill itself. And that's all we have for today. If there's any questions?
I'm good.
What are the charges for that? Do you know?
Uh, for the tower lease, I, previously there was no cost because we were providing internet to their buildings as well.
Oh, okay.
They went to a Starlink now, so it's a.
I was just gonna say, if cost is too much, Starlink works pretty well.
So I think it's about five hundred dollars now, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks Sean.
Ms. Gina.
Good morning, Gina James, Health and Human Services. On the agenda tomorrow is an amendment to our contract with Washington State Department of Health. Uh, they often will send amendments at the start of the new fiscal year allocating funding for the new period. So that's what we're seeing um in this amendment. This particular amendment is allocating three different types of funding. The first is a, it's called a FEVER, Public Health Emergency Preparedness and Response. So they're adding about forty-four thousand dollars of that funding. We, in the past, have had a, a full-time position um who does some of that work. We are um now utilizing existing staff. And so this funding will pay for some of that time to do trainings and work with DEM and do some planning activities with the state and regional partners. We're also seeing our allocation of foundational public health services funding um in about one million dollars. Um, and years past, it's been about one point four million, so we saw a reduction in that funding um for this fiscal year. Um, and then we are also seeing about two hundred and fifty dollars for um Perry Hep B work. Um, so this is just um some work that our nurses do, uh, working with uh moms who may be delivering a baby. If they've had a Hep B um diagnosis and making sure that those kids get the treatment they need if they need that um to prevent the illness.
Two hundred and fifty?
Two hundred and fifty dollars. We don't see, unfortunately, we don't see a lot of that, and so that's why it's so small.
Well, I guess that's kind of good news, right?
Yeah. Yes.
What kind of stuff does the public health services, what do you do with? That mean, what kind of things?
Yeah, so I.
Would fall under there?
As you recall, we um, we historically have sent some of this funding back um because we've not utilized it.
This is the one they got all, that we sent eight hundred thousand back or something? Is that the one they were, they were talking about, right?
Yes, yeah, yes. Um, so we do have a couple of uh positions that are supported with this work. We also utilize it with um to do some of our TB work. Um, we've seen a big increase with that TB cases in the last couple of years. We've also utilized this funding to support some work with the school gardens.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we, we do want to have some more conversation with the board about this funding. Um, and how it will get utilized for this year. I think we have our budget um workshop, um, either at the end of this month or first part of October. And we want to look at that as we're looking at our, our budget and being a little bit tighter for next year. And so we're looking at what funding we have and how we can utilize it the best, so. Any other questions?
Not regarding this Gina, but are there any uh open seats on the task force, the housing task force?
Yes, we have three openings right now on the task force. We have, currently have twelve members. It can have up to fifteen. Um, I think we do have an application that came in um. From a community member. We also need though, a new uh with the retirement of Sheriff um Harris. Um, he served on our task force as the requi, as a required membership of a county representative. So we do need uh to find a replacement for that to, in order to meet that requirement. In the past, the county representative has been, um, Sheriff Harris has been serving in that capacity for a few years. Prior to that, it was someone from building and planning. Um, it could be anyone within the county. It could be a commissioner. It could be myself. It could be anyone that represents the county. So we do need to refill that one and I have, I have not reached out to have any conversations about who may be interested, but. Yeah, so as long as we have room to fill that spot, we do have openings for other community members.
Though I attend those meetings, I think we would be better served having somebody other than a commissioner on that board.
Do appreciate your participation, though.
Hey.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, Jessica Ziegel. You want to give her a try? I see this. Anybody familiar with this person? Are you familiar with this person at all?
I can give her a call and talk to her.
Do you mind reaching out and getting a little bit of history on it?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, uh, Jessica is an available tool. Ten thirty, but we do have an executive. Session request for. Qualifications of an. Performance of a public employee, ten minutes. Okay. We can do that. Okay, we can do that. Okay, back from executive session. All decisions rendered. We don't have Jessica available till 10:30, so we'll recess till 10:30. They upgraded their jail.
Okay, back from recess. Jessica.
Good morning. Jessica Warren, Human Resources. I have one request this morning from Building and Planning. It's a request to fill their permit coordinator slash specialist position. The employee just put in his resignation effective September 25th.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. And then I have two executive sessions, one for qualifications of an applicant and then one for collective bargaining.
Time frame?
Uh, let's do twenty total.
Twenty for both? Okay, we'll go executive session, qualifications of an applicant, collective bargaining, twenty minutes. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, back from recess, Jessica.
Good morning, Jessica Warren, Human Resources. I have one request this morning from Building and Planning. It's a request to fill their permit coordinator slash specialist position. The employee just put in his resignation effective September 25th. Okay, thank you. And then I have two executive sessions, one for qualifications of an applicant and then one for collective bargaining.
Time frame?
Uh, let's do twenty total.
Twenty for both?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll go executive session, qualifications of an applicant, collective bargaining, twenty minutes, okay?